Good evening and welcome to the July 10, 2025, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky, Rothman, De Placido.
Here.
Laney Martin. Brown.
Here.
Weingrad.
Here.
Henry. Zepone. Young Gertz.
Here.
Spiegelmann.
Here.
Bowe.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Bowman. Vice President Behe.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here. Thank you. Please note that Commissioners Brodsky, Laney Martin, Henry Zepone, and Bowman are excused this evening, and may we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Thank you. Before we begin the voting section of our meeting tonight, we are delighted to be joined by the Command Staff and members of the Police Department. We have the wonderful occasion this evening that we will be doing the ceremonial swearing in of six new officers who are joining the Abington Police Department, led by our fantastic Chief Pat Malloy, and I'm going to invite Chief Malloy to the podium.
So, good evening, President Hecker, Vice President Behe, Manager Christman, members of the Board, and all the family and friends who are joining us here tonight, both in the room and on Zoom. On behalf of the men and women of the Abington Township Police Department, it is my distinct honor to welcome the newest members of the Abington Township Police Department family. Tonight, President Hecker will be swearing in five officers who recently graduated from the Montgomery County Police Academy, and one veteran officer with nine years of police experience. It has been decades since we swore in this many officers at one time, and I want to sincerely thank Manager Christman, the President of the Board, and all the Board members for allowing us this time to recognize these officers as they begin their careers by publicly taking the sacred oath to uphold the Constitution, our values, and carry out their duties in this most noble profession with both courage and compassion. The recent academy graduates, Justin Cologne, Michael Cresenzzo, Samantha Landis, Ethan Medina, and Tara Pepe successfully completed a rigorous six-month training program at the Montgomery County Police Academy. Officer Patrick Dorsey joins us from Salisbury Township Police Department, bringing nine years of local law enforcement experience with him. These probationary officers have just completed their in-house training and are now assigned to our patrol division, where they will ride along with their field training officers for the next three months as they prepare for solo patrol duties in Abington Township. I want to, Officer Cologne, if you can step forward, please. Officer Cologne was born in Philadelphia and currently resides in Elkins Park, Pennsylvania. He attended North Penn High School in Lansdale, PA, and he earned his bachelor's degree in finance from Temple University. He distinguished himself in the academy and was honored with the coveted Physical Fitness Award, graduating with the top score among all of the cadets in the Police Academy. You can step back. Officer Cresenzzo. Officer Cresenzzo was born in Bristol, PA, and currently resides in Pendel. He attended Neshamoney High School, and he served in the U.S. Army's Special Forces. Officer Cresenzzo is a veteran of the elite Second Ranger Battalion. He was deployed to Afghanistan and Syria with Delta Force. He and his girlfriend have a one-and-a-half-year-old beautiful daughter who I just met, and we welcome you to Abington. You can step back. Thank you. Officer Dorsey. Officer Dorsey was born in Meadowbrook, PA, and currently resides in Yardley with his wife and two children. He attended Abington Friends School in Jankentown. He earned his bachelor's degree from Drew University, where he played basketball, and a master's degree in criminal justice from Holy Family University. Before joining our team, he served as a police officer with Salisbury Township Police Department, where he was a member of the Bucks County Regional SWAT Team. He is also bilingual, speaking Spanish as a second language. Thank you, Officer Dorsey. Officer Landis, an Abington girl here. Officer Landis was born and raised in Abington, where she still resides. She attended Nazareth Academy High School in Philadelphia and earned her bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Westchester University. She was honored as the Police Academy valedictorian, graduating with the highest academic average in a very competitive environment, so congratulations on that. Thank you. Officer Medina was born in California. We have a California boy, Hanford, California, and currently lives in Eagleville. He attended Lamoore High School in Lamoore, California, and earned his bachelor's degree in criminology from Penn State University. Officer Medina is also bilingual, speaking Spanish as a second language. He and his girlfriend reside in Willow Grove and are proud parents of a one-and-a-half-year-old daughter. Thank you. All right, and last but not least, Officer Pepe. Tara Pepe was born in Bristol, PA, and currently lives in Hatboro. She attended both Ben Salem Township High School and Bucks County Technical High School. She worked in the healthcare profession before putting herself through the academy. While in the academy, she distinguished herself as the ultimate team player and excelled in control tactics and physical fitness. We recently learned that she is now the model, appearing proudly as the female law enforcement officer on the Montgomery County recruit posters all throughout the county, so congratulations for that. God knows that we need to recruit more qualified women, and you guys represent that, so thank you for all that you've done for that. And if I could have President Hecker join us for the swearing in. If you have the Bible, please go up and... Want a regular microphone? Okay. Yep. I'll turn this... Should I turn this off? This is awesome. Liz wants to come up. Oh, yeah, you're good. You can come in wherever you want. I think I'm going to stand here. Is everybody okay? And can you hear okay back there? Oh, yeah, okay.
We don't want any family members to miss this. If you want to get close to take pictures or audio, video, this will be available later, too.
That's awesome. Okay. Thank you. Good evening, officers. Welcome to Abington Township. I had the opportunity to meet most of you, although I'm sorry, I don't think I got a chance to say hello to you. Welcome, welcome. We're delighted that you're joined by your families. This is a wonderful moment for your hard work and sacrifice to get to this point, and we appreciate the noble profession that you've chosen to dedicate your lives to in pursuit of making Abington a safe place it's been over the last 20 to 30 years. So, the way this will work is I'm going to read this, and you will probably state your names when I say state your name, and then you want to put your hand on the Bible and raise your other hand? Okay. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and the Township of Abington, that I will faithfully discharge with fidelity the duties of my office as a police officer for Abington Township, and will obey the rules and regulations, policies and procedures governing all sworn members of the Abington Township Police Department. This is where we clap. Officers, congratulations.
All the [inaudible] we can all move outside. [inaudible]
I think we're good. Okay. We will now get back to the regularly scheduled agenda. I have no additional announcements this evening, and so we will move into public comment on matters on the agenda that the Board will be voting on, and then we will have a separate public comment section at the end of the meeting for general comments and questions. Please state your name.
No updates were shared in the minutes. I'm sorry. No updates were shared in the minutes, and that means no transparency. Citizens presented insightful statements and questions in June. Insightful statements and questions were again dismissed as mere comments. No feedback, no answers. Has the Toll family been asked to partner with Lynwood Hall? It would be a compliment to the Tolls to have their collection displayed at Lynwood. The Widener family art collection, originally displayed at Lynwood Hall, was a cornerstone donation in the history of the National Gallery of Art in Washington, DC.
I can save you a few more minutes. The Toll family has withdrawn their application for this, and so will not be moving forward.
Are they thinking about partnering with Lynwood Hall?
I don't know, and that's not germane to the township's business.
Okay. Well, it would be nice. All right, and Lynwood Hall was spelled wrong. I think it's important to get that right. L-Y-N-N-E-W-O-O-D. It should be corrected, and this was worth repeating. Over $1.5 million spent on the services of Richard Manfredi and Karen Sanchez's law firm. There has been no economic development during Mr. Manfredi's almost nine years of control, only rot. Karen Sanchez's law firm should not be taking any money from taxpayers. It does not look proper to have the Sanchez family and extended associates in multiple areas. The EDC is strategizing against average citizens. The Keswick Plan benefits wealthy real estate holders, not small businesses at all. Briar Bush has been defunded. The proof can be seen by visiting the center. The Butterfly House closed right after opening. Animals are not being adopted. The lack of animals undermines the value of the center. Every book except one is over 30 years old. Some books are over 60 years old. The manipulatives also were decades old. Commissioners, including Ms. Schreiber, laughed as I described the depletion of Briar Bush. Mr. Klein defamed himself by mimicking fluttering butterflies while I was speaking. Highland Farms is filled with house rot. Commissioners, is the plan to starve Briar Bush and then close the center for apartment development? 12 million is going into parks. Briar Bush is getting nothing. Is the big laugh due to the replacement of good homes for tenement apartments? Purposeful and planned rot travels up and down Edge Hill, Tyson, Rothley, Easton, Susquehanna, Old York, Woodland, Moreland, Welsh, Meeting House, and Highland Avenue. Smaller side streets are rotting, too. Is the plan to not tell citizens until the rot is right in front of their door? Commissioners already have the rot in front of their doors.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is expired.
Are there any updates about Briar Bush?
I don't have any updates at this time.
See, I told you you wouldn't. You said you would. Has anyone else wished to speak?
If not, we will go to Zoom, and then we'll begin the voting portion of the meeting.
Laura Lehman.
So, Commissioner Hecker, I also, you know, I don't know how we can have a president of the Board of Commissioners who promises on film that he'll answer questions and then makes no effort to do that. You clearly, I mean, to literally sit there and lie in a meeting is not acceptable.
It's not lying, Ms. Lehman. We've been working on it, and you sent a very detailed email yesterday that the staff has been working on. You will have a response by Monday. I have the draft in my hand, so you need to realize that when you have a voluminous email with literally dozens of questions embedded throughout, it takes time to be thoughtful in response, and you will have a response by Monday.
So, Commissioner Hecker, a month ago, you said you would get back to me on the small lots. What I sent you yesterday is completely different. It was about 1908. They were the comments that I said I would send, and I sent them along. So, don't try and say that you are in the midst of working on what you promised.
Well, you referenced it in the email yesterday, and so we have been working on it, and we took the time to...
A month?
We're working to respond to the other things that were raised in the email as well. You will have a response on Monday.
For a month, you did not get back to me, and...
So, a minute ago, it was we never responded. I tell you, we're working on responding, and now that's not sufficient either, Ms. Lehman. I'm not sure how to respond to that. Sorry.
You're telling a lie right now because I'm talking...
I am not. I absolutely am not telling a lie.
I'm talking about two things, one that you were supposed to say before the meeting, one that you promised at the meeting you would tell me, has nothing to do with the letter I say, but I referenced it.
It's literally in your email from the other day, the exact question that you asked at last month's meeting that we've been working to answer. So, I'll repeat what I said three times now for a fourth time. You will have an answer on Monday.
Right back to me, you would just say, "We're working on that." You don't have to wait till my letter yesterday for an entire month.
Ms. Lehman, you'll have a response on Monday. Do you have anything else?
Return my time now, okay? So, at this point, you've taken one and a half minutes to argue with.
Well, now it's a minute and 40, so I would get going.
I would actually like you to return that time, please.
Please continue.
Commissioner Hecker, this is the first time the Speaker has asked you not to interrupt her. She was clearly engaging you in conversation.
Yes.
And in a question and answer. That time does not mean to be returned, but I would let her speak uninterrupted from here moving forward.
Understood.
Thank you. I'll expect my three minutes, and I'm now two minutes and eight seconds into this, so...
You're not required to do that, Commissioner Hecker. The Speaker was clearly engaging in a back and forth with you and never asked for you not to interrupt her. You do not have to give that time back.
I actually just answered that he was not telling the truth, so to interrupt me and tell something new that's not the truth, we're still in the middle of that. So, I would like at this point for you to return my time.
I would get to the comments that you want to make now.
So, my first comments are on 2241 Old Welsh. Again, you just watched the police officers take an oath and say they would follow the rules and regulations and all the laws, and you also took an oath, Commissioner Hecker, and the rest of the Commissioners, to do the same, and it's not happening in this town.
That is false? I'm sorry?
Are you doing this again?
Okay. I will answer later because that is absolutely not true.
I'm going to tell you that was false, that what you have done here, it is not legal for you to advertise 2241, and then the day before the meeting, you have a brand... It should have gone to the zoning hearing board, as advertised, but the day before the meeting, there was a new document put out where the garages were recessed, and that's what you voted on, but it had not been advertised. It had not been out for seven days, and you voted on it. And I've already written about that months and months ago and gotten no response, and if there's any reason whatsoever that that could be possible, I think I would do a response. Secondly, on item 1908, where you would like to change the zoning ordinance, we have a comprehensive plan consistency committee that is required to review the things, anything that would be changed in our zoning ordinance, and this would be a change to the zoning ordinance. It was not appropriately advertised and understood, and no place was it brought before people who had an opportunity to understand it and then comment. 1908 will harm many people who have lots next to these tiny slivers of land, and again, you've not gotten back to me on how tiny this is.
Ms. Lehman, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments. I did give you extra time.
I don't think so. We're at four minutes now, and you were two minutes in.
Ms. Lehman, please conclude your comments.
I'll wrap them up now. Please don't interrupt me as I wrap them up.
If you do it succinctly, you will not be interrupted.
1908 will harm people if you put it in force because they will not get notified, and Commissioner Laney Martin was not given the truth about that when she asked that question. You need not to harm people. You need to revisit this, and certainly there are some that wouldn't need to go, but they...
Okay. Ms. Lehman, thank you for your comments. With that, we will now move on to the consent agenda, and for that, I will turn to Board Vice President Matt Behe.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's only one item on the consent agenda, and that is the minutes from the last meeting, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we're going to move forward to new business, and I will once again turn this over to Board Vice President Matt Behe.
First item is BOC-01-071025. Motion approved. Land Development 24-01, which is 2241 Old Welsh Road. Final major subdivisional land development plan and adopt resolution number 25-020. Nice to move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the Board, either here or on Zoom?
President Hecker.
Commissioner Brown.
I just want to make sure at this point that all the residents are good with the plan moving forward, and communication has been... I know Commissioner Laney Martin is not here, but I would like it of record that I inquired about the residents, making sure that they were aware, informed, and approved.
Thank you. Yeah, I've personally talked to some of the residents over there as well in the last two weeks. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-02-071025. Motion to authorize advertisement of ordinance number 2232, amending the code of the Township of Abington at Part II, General Legislation, Chapter 162, zoning, at Article II, Definitions, Article 21, Use Regulations, Article 22, Parking and Transportation, and the Comprehensive Use Matrix to Incorporate Provisions for C-39 Medical Marijuana Dispensary and D-18 Medical Marijuana Grower/Processor Uses, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Clark, could you just remind the Board of the reasoning behind this agenda item?
Sure. This is essentially what we're currently calling a cleanup amendment to fix the confusion that was created when the new zoning code and the original amendment were adopted back in 2018, and they did not properly align. There also, it's been revised to incorporate some of the comments from the Montgomery County Planning Commission. We have removed the Main Street District for dispensaries. Dispensaries will be permitted in the Business Commercial District, and the grower/processor will be permitted in the Suburban Industrial District. We're also updating the parking requirements for both uses. And again, what we did here was try to incorporate some of the changes suggested by the Montgomery County Planning Commission and to make sure that this aligns with the zoning code. This also will not be impacted if and when Pennsylvania ever adopts recreational marijuana. That will be a whole different set of regulations. A whole different set of regulations, so it won't impact that.
Okay. Thank you. Are there comments or questions for members of the Board? Commissioner De Placido.
Thank you, President Hecker. Assistant Senator Clark, Section 2, Number 4, about the advertising, is the medical marijuana dispensary allowed to advertise on billboards in the township?
I believe that they are.
They are?
They are. And I believe that's consistent with the state regulations.
Okay. And Section 2 as well, Number 8, is the age 18 or 21?
18.
It is 18?
Yep.
Okay.
Because you can be in between 18 and 21 and have a medical marijuana card, and therefore you're able to go into the dispensary when we understand that if there does come a time where there is recreational marijuana, that age limit will be set at 21.
Okay. All right. And one more question. In Section 3, that actually has to do with Section 3, can a grower and a seller operate on the same plot if it's over a certain amount of acres?
They would not be because of they're not permitted in the same districts.
They're not... Okay. That's the one I understand. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-03-071025. Motion to authorize advertisement of ordinance number 2233, amending the code of Township of Abington at Part II, General Legislation, Chapter 58, Animals, to add a new article, Article 7, Sale of Dogs and Cats, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there comments or questions for members of the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item of new business is BOC-04-071024. Motion to authorize advertisement of ordinance number 2234, amending the code of the Township of Abington at Part II, General Legislation, Chapter 162, Zoning, Article 19, Nonconforming Uses, Structures, Lots, and Signs. By amending and rescinding Section 1908, Expansion of or Construction of a Nonconforming Lot, to revise provisions for special exceptions. Nice to move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the Board? Mr. Christman, can we make sure that the zoning hearing board gets a link to the video of this meeting so they can see that their recommendation passed?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-05-071024. Motion to adopt ordinance number 2231, revising the Volunteer Service Tax Credit Program, originally established pursuant to ordinance number 2143, enacting tax credits for volunteer members of the volunteer fire companies of Abington Township Fire Department and nonprofit emergency medical services agencies. Nice to move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for members of the Board? Commissioner Brown, yeah?
I'm just really ecstatic that this is getting voted on tonight. This has been an issue that was brought to my attention when I was first appointed a few years back by Mark Hood of the Edge Hill Fire Company, and we truly have an elite fire, volunteer fire department. allowed to advertise on billboards in the township?
I believe that they are.
They are?
They are. And I believe that's consistent with the state regulations.
Okay. And Section 2 as well, Number 8, is the age 18 or 21?
18.
It is 18? Okay.
Because you can be in between 18 and 21 and have a medical marijuana card, and therefore, you're able to go into the dispensary when we understand that if there does come a time where there is recreational marijuana, that age limit will be set at 21.
Okay. And one more question. In Section 3, that actually has to do with Section 3. Can a grower and a seller operate on the same plot if it's over a certain amount of acres?
They would not be because of they're not permitted in the same districts.
They're not, okay. That's the one I understand. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-03-071025. Motion to authorize advertisement of ordinance number 2233, amending the code of Township of Abington at Part II General Legislation, Chapter 58 Animals, to add a new Article, Article 7, Sale of Dogs and Cats. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item of new business is BOC-04-071024. Motion to authorize advertisement of ordinance number 2234, amending the code of the Township of Abington at Part II General Legislation, Chapter 162, Zoning, Article 19, Nonconforming Uses, Structures, Lots, and Signs, by amending and rescinding Section 1908, Expansion of or Construction of a Nonconforming Lot, to revise provisions for special exceptions. Nice to move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Mr. Christman, can we make sure that the zoning hearing board gets linked to the video of this meeting so they can see that their recommendation passed?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-05-071024. Motion to adopt ordinance number 2231, revising the Volunteer Service Tax Credit Program, originally established pursuant to ordinance number 2143, enacting tax credits for volunteer members of the volunteer fire companies of Abington Township Fire Department and nonprofit emergency medical services agencies. Nice to move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Brown, yeah?
I'm just really ecstatic that this is getting voted on tonight. This has been an issue that was brought to my attention when I was first appointed a few years back by Mark Hood of the Edgehill Fire Company. And we truly have an elite fire, volunteer fire department in Abington Township that is very deserving of this program. And if it helps to retain and recruit more qualified volunteers, then I'm all for it in a full-throated manner.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any other comments or questions for members of the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-06-071024. Motion to award Phase 2B of the Abington Jenkins Town Connections Project to G and B Construction in the amount of $440,139.06. And to reallocate $23,375 from line item 18-10780-430-250047, and up to $75,000 from line item 18-10780-480-250027 to this project. Nice to move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you want to read that again?
Nope.
I didn't think so. Any questions for members of the board? Commissioner Weinberg.
I want to thank township staff and the engineering folks for moving AJC 2B forward. And many residents are looking forward to the improvements on Greenwood. And so am I. And so, thank you.
Yeah, that project has really transformed that corridor. There's no- Do not interrupt the meeting again. You're on notice. The next one? Ms. Kubel, I'm telling you right now, if you speak out again, you will be removed. You will be removed. Ms. Kubel, stop, or you're going to be taken out. Stop. Ms. Kubel, the meeting is recessed. Okay. I think we were finished with that item, so we will move on. Commissioner De Placido.
Yeah, I did have one question, Commissioner Hecker. Ashley, what is the scope of Phase 2B? And like, quickly, if you could? The reason I ask is because I had a lot of, many neighbors have been inquiring about traffic patterns and things like that. So I want to see if this is included in there.
It won't change the traffic patterns. It's sidewalk curbing, some stormwater connections, as well as a pedestrian crosswalk and flasher across Greenwood Avenue.
Across Greenwood? Okay. I'm sorry, can I ask?
Sure.
Is there, I believe there was, part of the plan was to close the cut through, but it seems to be open and functioning. Is that eventually going to close?
We are working, oh, oh.
Black of a nose, much better than me.
No, we are working our way towards there. So Phase 5 of the Abington Jenkins Towns Project. So we're, 1, 2, 3, and 4 are complete. 2B now, and then 5. So we are working towards that. As of right now, we have three grants associated with that project. And we are preparing another application. I think it's around 1.3 million. So we are moving that direction. But the goal would be to close down that road and make the improvements at Meeting House that are necessary in order to do that.
Okay, and that still includes the turning lane?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So hopefully, I'll be before you awarding that soon enough.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
That concludes the new business, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Behe. We will now turn to matters of the Finance Committee and Finance Committee Chair Stuart Weinberg.
Thank you, President Hecker. First item, FC01071025. Consider the 2025-2029 CDBG Consolidated Plan, its Associated 2025 Annual Action Plan, and a substantial amendment to the 2021 Annual Action Plan for submission to HUD. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Second item, 02071025. Motion to adopt the amended Mission Square 457B Deferred Compensation Plan Document for the Secure 2.0 Act Provisions. And I so move.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Last item, FC03071025. Motion to approve the May 2025 expenditures in the amount of $4,366,343.83, and salaries and wages in the amount of $3,618,399.90, and authorizing the proper officials to sign and approve invoices and supporting documentation and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of August 2025. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Missioners Brodsky, Rothman, De Placido?
Yes.
Laney Martin?
Yes.
Weinberg?
Yes.
Henry Sapon? Young Gertz?
Yes.
Spiegelman?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Treiber?
Yes.
Bowman? Vice President Behe?
Yes.
President Hecker?
Yes.
Missionary.
And that concludes the Finance Committee Agenda Items for this evening. Thank you, President Hecker.
Commissioner Weinberg, I'm going to have you do the Pension Committee, too, if you don't mind.
I am present, just so you know.
I know, but we tend to not do agenda readings virtually.
Okay, great. The only Pension Committee item is PC01071025. Motion to appoint Andre Berry to act as a salaried employee representative to the Abington Township Non-Uniformed Employees Pension Plan effective immediately. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that concludes the Pension Committee Items for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Weinberg. We'll now open it up for public comment on general matters of township business. You can come forward. Before we do-
I think essentially, Commissioner, what we have done previously is we have relied on Chief Malloy and his staff's discretion as to whether or not to re-admit someone to the room, with the understanding that if the behavior that led to their being removed is repeated, they will again be removed from the room. But I think what we have done recently is have relied on Chief Malloy's discretion.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay.
An outburst in here amounts to two words. Now, I want to say my name is Adele Kubel. I live in Abington. You have said to me in open meeting, you're not getting any answers here. And I'm not. You said you were going to answer questions concerning Briar Bush. You did not. It's been defunded. And hundreds of thousands are going to a dangerous Jenkins Town-Abington connections. That is what developers want. Presenting a lobbyist as a grassroots independent volunteer is wrong. Ross Abel and the Jenkins Town-Abington Neighbors Association promotes the needs of developers. Commissioners and Ross Abel are not being transparent. The bike infrastructure has an extravagant and growing cost, and will be a disaster. Vision Zero has no support from any local police department, including Philadelphia. Developers support Vision Zero. It allows for tight and dangerous development with no parking. We are paying for the amenities that developers should be paying for. Abington will go bankrupt, assisting 1%ers to create a dangerous environment. Whole streets of homes are controlled by developers. This information was verified by many, including the 40% approximately that are rotting their homes. House rotters work for developers and lobby for their needs. Meanwhile, the homes they live in are gradually being destroyed. House rotters can be longtime neighbors at this point. Rotting homes is approved by commissioners. House rot is now extensive. I had a meeting, I have hundreds of pictures. This rot is planned and collaborated effort. Primary streets such as Susquehanna are lined with rotting homes. Secondary streets such as Edgehill, Tyson, Shoemaker, Rothley, and Highland are now rotted. Rotting homes are on Mrs. Young Gertz's street. They're also on Mr. Spiegelman's street, almost right next door. Blight pushes homeowners to sell. Blight, with increased taxes, will drive Abington home prices down. Developers will then buy more homes for less. That is the plan. The worst Abington homes are available for rent by approved slum lords. No one spoke out. Mr. Bowman showed support for a slum lord. Average citizens go to court for minor violations. VIP house rotters pile up broken-down cars, 10-foot weed growth, mattresses and gas containers. We do need a good fire department with the mattresses and gas containers. VIP house rotters never go to court. Not at all. I've been to court at least six or seven times. Vote yes supporters included house rotters and those that support charter schools. Vote yes supporter posted, posters posted.
Ms. Kubel, your time has expired. Take your seat.
No answers, just as you keep your promise.
Your time has expired. Take your seat. Does anyone else wish to come forward? I think you wanted to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Rabbi Elise Swekerman. I live on Bakias. And Ms. Young Gertz, Mrs. Young Gertz is my ward commissioner.
Welcome.
I spoke to you last month, and I'm here to reiterate. Last time, I didn't see you, you didn't see me. So I thought I would show up again. I am here to speak to you about an issue that concerns me and a number of Abington residents. And that is the role that our township employees, both police and others, play in cooperating or not cooperating with ICE. You may not be aware, but ICE has been incredibly active in Montgomery County of late. There are, as far as we know, 30 individuals have been taken by force from their homes, ripped out of their homes, mostly in Norristown, but not only. Not a single one of them is charged with a crime. There may be some misdemeanors, but not a single one of them is charged with a felony or anything like that. Those are only the ones that we know about because they're connected to community. I'm sure there's more. I had a lovely meeting with Chief Malloy this morning, and I want to say publicly, thank you. He has made it clear that his officers will not cooperate with ICE on administrative warrants. Of course, they will do their job when it comes to criminal warrants and judicial warrants, because we expect them to do that. And I wouldn't expect anything less. But there is no need for our officers to be put into the position of having to decide someone's future based on an administrative warrant. I'd like to respectfully ask that you consider policies at your level about township employees, and what questions they can answer, and what information they can gather about residents and people they interact with. I would hate for our employees to be put into the position of having to decide whether or not to reveal information that might put someone in danger in a way that they don't understand. There are very easy ways to do this. And I think you have all received a letter from me with sample policies. I urge you to consider them. Obviously, our township solicitor would need to review them to make sure that they work with our laws. But I urge you to do this, and I urge you to do this quickly, because things are getting much more active in Montgomery County. And I believe that Abington can also pave the way and be a model for making a welcoming community here in this part of Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Hi, my name's Katie, and I live over on Elk and Zav.
Good evening.
So, good evening. My name is Katie. I wanted to first say thank you for allowing me to speak today. I have many friends who are immigrants, who are former exchange students of my neighbor. I am still very close to them. One in particular, Michelle. Michelle shaped me into the person I am today. And I worry every day that ICE will target her. When I say freedom, I mean freedom for all in this country. We are all human. I am not asking you to break any laws, but to avoid legally required actions. But I am asking that due process remains a hallmark to our judicial system. I'm not aware of any issues specifically in Abington, but I have seen it in other parts of Montgomery County. There have been many times of confusion that led to unlawful detainment of citizens. We have to ensure this doesn't occur in our community or even in our township. That our township employees, including police officers, have necessary guidance and information when responding to ICE requests. I understand that Police Chief Malloy has already said Abington Police Department will not assist ICE. And I personally thank him as well. I would also like to know if this is a personal decision or if it's like a township policy. I do ask if you could clarify how all township employees are going to respond when asked private information, like immigration status. And I ask that you enact the policies in the model ordinance that actually Rabbi Elise provided, that she provided at the last Township Commissioners Meeting. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming to speak out this evening. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yeah, come forward, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name's Bernard Epstein. I live at 1421 Autumn Road in Riddell. Commissioner Weinberg is my commissioner. Good to see you again. I just want to come up and echo what my two comrades here have already shared. I can't say it any more eloquently than them. But I would like to make sure that you consider seriously passing an ordinance that will prohibit any city, excuse me, township employees from assisting, right, in any way ICE[1600.22] in whatever capacity they would like to act in obtaining information about immigrants, our neighbors. Please, please give it thought. I have plenty of immigrant neighbors. I know plenty of folks who are struggling and have struggling in local and other surrounding townships and municipalities who are fearing for their lives and fearing about being torn away from their families. And as a practicing clinical social worker for almost twenty years, specializing in treating psychological trauma and the effects it has on our bodies and the relationships in our families and how it cuts across generations, I just plead with you to consider doing everything you can in your legal power to not cooperate with with the horrific things we're seeing happening across the country right now and in surrounding municipalities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Does anyone else wish to speak? Yeah, please come forward.
Hello. This is my first time coming. My name is Dennis Efimov. I live on Corinthian Avenue, and I believe Commissioner Young Gertz is my commissioner. I am motivated to speak for the first time at a board meeting on this very same issue, on the issue of cooperation with ICE. So I'd like to give a little bit of a background. I am an Abington resident for over ten years. I've been a student in the, in the Abington School System since third grade, but I'm not born in this country. I am not a natural U.S. citizen. I was naturalized at age twelve. And many of my friends in the Abington School System are also immigrants. I have many friends who were not born in this country or were not citizens at the time of attending school. And the recent uptick in ICE activity is frightening and concerning to myself and the people I consider dear to me. I think that it is important for Abington Township to recognize its strength as a community of diversity and as a community that openly welcomes immigrants into its arms. And I want the commissioners to heavily, heavily, heavily consider the policies that, that Rabbi Elise has sent to all of you to, which makes it very, very easy to put a plan together to have our township officials not cooperate with ICE. No one is asking them to break the law. Everyone understands that judicial warrants are not something that we have authority over, but we have authority over what our township employees are directed to do in other matters. And I think it's very important that we send a strong message to our community and to neighboring counties and, and townships that this is a stance that we are willing to take, that we are willing to defend our immigrant neighbors and community members. I very strongly look forward to the Board of Commissioners considering it and passing it soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out to speak. Yes, please come forward.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Victoria Kraus. I am new to Abington. I live at Egerton Avenue and Mount Carmel, next to Pembroke Park. I'm, I'm, no, I'm saying it wrong. I, I moved here from Los Angeles, California, where I was born and raised, and really happy to be here. This is my first Township Council meeting. And I'm here with my comrades, standing in solidarity as a second-generation American and daughter of an immigrant. I advocate, advocate for dignity among our immigrant neighbors. Separately, I have just a couple of questions about Abington Township Council, how things work. As a renter, I, I rent my apartment. I'm curious if there are any resources for renter advocacy, things like right to counsel, tenant-renter advocacy for folks that may not be able to afford, you know, their own lawyer. So, yeah, curious about dedicated resources for that. And then also, I'm also wondering if there's like a communications committee or a dedicated staff person to reach out to all Abington constituents. I only heard about this meeting and these meetings from my, my neighbors here, so I've never gotten, received anything in the email or on the email.
So we can help you with that for sure. Ashley actually put together a very nice card last year that demonstrates all of the ways that you can be connected to the township to receive timely information about meetings and everything that's hap... We'll make sure that you have access to that so that you, you can get whatever you want to get moving forward.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
And that was it. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming out. I appreciate it.
And I'm your commissioner, so I'll be introducing myself to you after the meeting.
Wow. What'd you just, what'd you produce that at your seat? Ashley, like, what's going on? You guys are good. There you go. There you go.
With your permission, I can answer the first part of your question. Hi, I'm Kimberly Hamm. I'm the Director of Community Development here. We oversee the fair housing enforcement for the township. And there, we're actually, with the Commissioners' vote this evening, we now have two different fair housing agencies that serve the residents of Abington. The county has contracted with the Equality Equal Housing Center of Pennsylvania. And so we have been able to take advantage of their trainings and also their support. They also have a full guide available online for renters about what tenants' rights are. We're also with the vote tonight to approve our annual action plan for CDBG. Our residents also will be benefiting from some targeted fair housing education, both for landlords and renters, as well as the always-existing fair housing reporting, the violations that happen in the township as well. So if you like, you're more than welcome to reach out. Our department's webpage is abingtonpa.gov/cd for community development, and our contact information is there.
Thanks, Kim. Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak? And if not, we'll turn to Zoom.
Laura Lehman.
Laura Lehman, Meadowbrook. Here we go. Let me take that out, take that out of the room. Okay, so we're, so the reason I'm challenged here with this is that we have two things that aren't working, and maybe Nathan can help. There seems not to be on his new format that he's using, there's no button that lets me change the two screens. And so I can't see the, the people speaking. I just have the constant agenda up. So I, I would like to know how we can change that. And the second thing is that the sound is not coming out very loud, and I think that's from you. So we're, it's not coming out on one of my devices because that one's, but we're having trouble on the other ones too. So I, I hope we can get that fixed. I totally agree with these people that came and asked you about the immigration issues. We all know how horrendous that is. So I hope they're, they're, with their encouragement that we can do the right thing in Abington by people who are just trying to get by and not breaking laws. But we do have commissioners breaking laws. And Commissioner Hecker, and, and Mr. Clark, I'll address this to both of you, because that is completely inappropriate for you to take our speaking time, tell something that's completely not true. And then if I try to correct it, tell me that I'm engaging you in conversation, which you weren't supposed to interrupt in the first place, and I'm engaging you in conversation, and therefore I don't get my minutes back. You've already gotten us down to so few minutes that we can't say anything in this township. And it's very, very unfortunate. Both of those things happened a month ago. One of them, you didn't get back to me in time for last month's meeting, with no excuse and not a single contact from you, Mr. Hecker, after promising that on videotape, which makes it look to the residents like you're being a great guy, but you're not. You don't do it. And the, the nineteen-oh-eight issue that you just got from me, I was waiting for that answer from you. It has an effect on what I write and how it comes out. So there's too much going on that shouldn't be going on. Mr. Clark should be ruling genuinely on behalf of residents that pay his salary. And we, we are not, it doesn't cost you anything to put in an extra minute. The, the shame of it all is Mr. Clark was supposed to, according to the verdict of the grand jury, step down and step away.
Okay.
Anything to do with this township. I know you're going to start again, but it's my right to say that, and there are documents that back that up.
Yeah, nobody's stopping you other than the fact that your time has expired, so you need to conclude.
So to conclude, I will tell you, Commissioner Hecker, that you're breaking the law.
Yeah, I'm not, but continue.
The zoning hearing board is breaking the law. Their rule...
Ms. Kubel, you, I mean, see what I did? It's all the same. Ms. Lehman, your time has expired. And with that, we are adjourned.